Okay, it's a little after seven, so I'd like to call this meeting of the Silver Falls School Board to order. Please note attendance Denise. And Linda is in her chair, ready to go. So, SFFSD Collaboration Grant Report, Creative Compensation Presentation.
So, what I'm going to show to you is a PowerPoint presentation that has now been shared in all of the district schools at staff meetings. This is the culmination of this year's work from the Creative Compensation Committee. Remember, that is a committee that was mandated by the Collaboration Grant, but as we quickly got into our work and our discussion, it became evident that this is a very unique opportunity for us to be able to consider offering some different ways to compensate folks for the work that they do here in the district. So, we were very particular about the presentation when we did it in the buildings. We wanted to ensure that every single school got the same information. We started up front by saying we weren't going to take questions from the floor because we didn't want individual presenters in different buildings to be responding to those questions. Particularly, there are a lot of decisions that haven't been made, the nuances and the fine tuning of the plan. Those decisions have not been finalized, so we didn't want any of those sort of answers out there. We didn't want one person responding to a question in one way and another person responding to a question in a different way. So, you'll find that the presentation is somewhat canned. I'm reading from a script, but again, that ensured our uniformity in our presentations. And then, we offered everyone an opportunity to submit questions back in writing. We've got about 45 questions back from district teachers, and the committee met last Friday, and we spent four hours in this room hatching through and developing an FAQ to all of those questions that were submitted. So, I'll take you through the procedure. I will allow you the opportunity to ask some questions of me, but you'll find that likely in many of those instances, I will probably be telling you that the committee is still working on finalizing some of those decisions. So, this is the work that the Creative Compensation Committee has done. This was a team of 10 people, including both teachers and administrators, and they've been working together for 18 months. So, you'll note that we opened by saying we're here to relay information and not to answer specific questions, and we promised folks that we would have an FAQ back to them by tomorrow. So, that will be published up on the Collaboration Grant website and available to them. These are the members of the Creative Compensation Committee, and through the Collaboration Grant, each member of this team did receive a stipend for their work throughout the course Take a moment and read the Creative Compensation Committee's vision statement. We drafted this at our first several meetings. We generated this statement to align with the district's vision statement, and we referred to this frequently to ensure that the pilot model being created matched the core values of the district. Here's our current salary schedule. It's composed of steps and lanes, and pay increases are based upon college credits and years of experience. Veteran staff in the district freeze on the pay scale when they reach the bottom step in a lane until they earn enough credits to move over in the lane to the right. So, the first question we had to answer was, why would we be interested in pursuing a new compensation model? We read a lot of research, and we examined some creative compensation models in other districts, both in Oregon and across the nation, notably Portland, Maine, Colorado, and Pennsylvania. But our main reason after reading the research was that we need to compete with other school districts to attract new teachers, and we need to retain that quality of teachers we have by offering them ways to move on the pay scale other than years of experience and college credits. Notably, just this spring, we are sandwiched between Woodburn, Salem-Kaiser, and Staton, and all of those districts are currently offering signing bonuses for hard-to-fill positions for the fall. So, that's an additional reason that we need to have an attractive option to attract teachers to come to Silver Falls. So, the current reality is that the five largest school districts in Oregon have more teacher vacancies coming this fall than the total number of new college graduates in all of higher ed in Oregon. So, that is an astounding number of teachers that need to be hired. So, in addition, the percentage of millennials in the workforce continues to increase, forcing employers to become more appealing to this new generation. According to Forbes Magazine, millennials in education want several things. They want to learn and grow in their teaching careers. They want opportunities for career progression while staying in the classroom. They want to be challenged and given additional responsibilities, and they want actionable steps to improve their skills. So, in addition to attracting new teachers, the new pay scale is intended to not increase the enormous college debt our new teachers are experiencing. So, to advance on the new pay scale does not require additional college debt in order to move over to the next lane. In addition, TSBC licensing renewals have been changed, and their new policy is that college credit is no longer needed to renew a teaching license. You are only required to earn 25 PDU, so those are professional development units per year.
Is that because of the current teachers shortage?
Probably.
Will it change again?
Uh, it's got a pretty decent stronghold now. Higher ed has sort of acquiesced even, that was the big fight, obviously, at the beginning, was that higher ed was pushing back.
Which makes sense.
So, essentially, teachers that have an initial one license, that actually is going, that name is going away, but currently, anyone that has an initial one license, which is probably anyone that has been licensed within the past four to eight years, I would venture to guess, their requirement to renew with an initial two license is they must get a master's degree, and that has completely been eliminated.
Yeah, PDUs are required at like conventions.
Their seat hours. So, PDUs, so any professional development that the district offers, so August in-service, statewide in sort of say October, even PLCs, anything that is considered professional development is just hour for hour, one hour of state time is one PDU.
The state of Washington's really backed off on those departments as well.
Correct.
They're really hurting.
Yes, that's absolutely true. So, here are the current costs embedded in our current salaries. We took Western Oregon University as an example. There are the costs for credits. So, for example, a teacher enrolled in graduate coursework at Western Oregon will spend approximately $10,000 to move over a lane on the current pay scale to receive a pay increase of between $2,000 and $3,000.
That'll cost them, what'd you say, nine to 10,000?
It'll cost them about $10,000.
A bachelor's to a master's?
Correct. Costs them about $10,000, and that increase to move from a bachelor's to a master's is about a $3,000 pay increase.
Three, six, five or six to pay it off, yeah. Okay. And so, I do.
So, we made it very, very clear to all the teachers in all the buildings as we were presenting that this model will not be mandatory for anyone that is currently employed in the district. This is an opt-in model. The number one reason for the new model at its roots is to attract new teachers to come to Silver Falls, and so, we are currently in the process of considering the parameters for the opt-in model to determine how are we going to finalize the model, and what might that look like for veteran teachers, and what is the financial impact that could potentially come from, which teachers are allowed to opt into the model, and how we would pay for that.
Isn't this ultimately a collective bargaining issue?
No, and we'll talk about that at the end. Because it's not, because it will not be a pay schedule that impacts all of the association members, it will be included in an MOU.
And they've agreed, and they've agreed to that?
As an optional package. So, it doesn't even have to go to a vote to the members. It will go to their executive council for approval. So, and that's pretty typical, apparent, well, that's what we learned, as other districts have done this, that's pretty typical.
I'm surprised.
There's one district, Bend, has moved to some mandatory enrollment, and so, they did take it to their bargaining unit, but even that, they have kept that out of their contract.
So, as long as it's voluntary.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
But it wouldn't be voluntary for anybody new, for new partners, it would be mandatory for clients.
Correct. The intent, and it's a better deal for them.
Then it's a collective bargaining issue.
You'll see.
Has to be.
Nope, it's not.
It has to be.
In an, not if it's in an MOU, not if it's in the memorandum of understanding.
Well, I clarify about that too. I mean, the MOU does have to be renewed from time to time, and I think you're correct, Wally. At some point in time, it will have to be a bargaining, it's a mandatory subject of bargaining at some point if the majority of the teachers are impacted potentially by, unless the MOU just continues to renew itself year after year, or it could be a three-year MOU or two-year MOU. As long as that's continued to be renewed, then it stays off the bargaining table.
So, the information that we're working off of, so the districts that are farthest into this are mostly on the East Coast, and at this point, Portland, Maine is the longest into any sort of creative compensation, anything that looks different than steps and lanes. And so, they're at year nine, and they're considering at year 10 actually finally having to bargain it.
Because the majority of their...
I'm guessing.
Probably.
So, but they have maintained an MOU.
I'm surprised that you need to roll over this one.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, and the other piece too, Wally, is that the variables, let's say, the cost of living adjustments, those are applied to the first lane of this pilot.
Correct.
And so, those are still bargained, and so, those will still be applied in this sense, even though they're applied to the traditional salary schedule.
Okay. So, let me show you what the pilot model, what the draft looks like here. So, you'll notice there are still lanes in the model, but they are not associated with degrees or graduate credit hours. So, looking at the chart, each lane is composed of steps, but the steps do not automatically coincide with years of experience. So, that is different. Each lane has a bold number, that is the minimum number of years you must stay in that lane before you are eligible to be considered to move to the next lane. That's a financial constraint. Most districts that we've looked at have something similar to that. Our financial consultant highly recommends that, that's the only way that you can kind of manage, is by putting what they call gates in your system, so that you can't have people just jumping lane to lane to lane. All right, so, the concept has moved away from graduate credits to something called units of growth. So, we're gonna start by looking at lane one. Lane one, it says induction program, Envoy Training, and Danielson Training. We have a robust mentor program that is currently required for all teachers in years one and two of their teaching career. So, they come to the Silver Falls School District, if they have many years of experience, but they're new to Silver Falls, they don't qualify for the mentor program, but if they come to Silver Falls and they're within their first and second year of teaching, they are mandatory, were participants in the mentor grant, and so, that is mandatory that they participate in that. That mentor grant includes about 20 classroom observations from their mentor. They have a monthly three-hour seminar after school that they are compensated for. They take a weekend training in a classroom management system called Envoy. They receive eight hours of training in the Danielson Framework, which is the teacher evaluation system. We've had great success with the teachers that are currently in our mentor program, so much so that we're fighting with them to be done with the mentor program at year three. What we're finding now is they're saying, can I have someone else? Now, continue with me in this, in this partnership. They get active feedback on a regular basis, they get professional development that's geared towards them. So, we took that already successful program and just shifted all of those requirements and put them all in lane one. So, in year one and two, the expectations would be that a teacher completes the induction program, and in year three, that they would do an application project demonstrating their learning. Again, they would have mentor support to complete all of those, and at the end of year three, they would be eligible to move to lane two. If you remember, lane one does have five steps in it. If a teacher were unable to complete the requirements of the mentor program due to enforcing circumstances, in year three, they get pregnant, or something happens, family issues, they're allowed to stay in lane one for up to five years and will receive additional support to complete the requirements to move to lane two. But the majority of teachers will complete the requirements of the induction program and that project in their first three years. And then, again, to note that the steps don't relate to years of experience. When you complete the requirements for the induction program, let's say, at the end of step three in lane one, you move to step one of lane two. So, that's very different than the current steps in lane system where you always maintain your years of experience as your step. So, this, this system is intended for you to add and flow through the lanes like that. So, units of growth, once you have completed the induction program, there are all sorts of options. This is not an exhaustive list. You can potentially earn units of growth by becoming nationally board certified, that's what NBPTS is. You can elect to continue to earn college credits if you want to get your master's degree, that is still a part of this system. You can complete book study portfolio, we'll be offering in-district professional development courses, action research, there's all sorts of different options, and those haven't been vetted out to the nth degree, other than we do know that all proposals attempting to earn units of growth would go to what we're calling the peer review panel, and those will be pre-approved and then reviewed again at the completion of the project before units of growth are awarded. So, again, the idea being, there's no expense upfront for teachers, they're not forced to pay for college courses. In addition, it allows us to take a pot of money. Typically, we write checks to teachers for their extra duty hours, for curriculum work, for workshops that they're taking, and now, we can remove that stipend money, that extra duty money, and that can all be generated towards basically salaries, because we can now say, instead of paying you for your time, you can apply this work towards earning units of growth to move over on the pay scale. So, it's just a different way of thinking. So, when we looked at units of growth, we went back to Western Oregon, and we looked at their credit requirement. One graduate credit at Western Oregon is essentially equal to 10 hours of in-class time and 20 hours of out-of-class time. So, similarly, we have said that one unit of growth is approximately 30 hours of work. We clarified for teachers once again that units of growth are not the same as PDUs. PDUs are just seat time. If you are present, you earn the PDU, and units of growth will, will require them to present some sort of implementation of their learning, some sort of sharing and reflection upon how, how they are changing their practice, how they're improving in their classroom. And at the end of our presentation, we told people we know we've left a lot of things unsaid. Our initial presentation was just to give teachers a framework of the work that the team has done and of the direction that we believe we're heading. The most fundamental information that we wanted to share with teachers is that we are building opportunities that do not require you to pay upfront for schoolings, that there will be other ways for you to move across the pay scale. And at this point, we've got a very, very positive response. So, we're pleased with the work that the team has done. So, questions?
Just under comment. I like the general idea. It still looks like we're paying, we're still trying to move people across the pay scale by them going off and doing something other than their core job. Was there any thought and discussion about measuring actual performance in the classroom? And, because you can observe that, you can have criteria, and it doesn't have to be based on what's, how students do, it could be what you're actually doing in the classroom.
So, that is actually...
And I've seen this before, what I've seen people do is go off and they see what's gonna take to get a raise, they go off and do all this other stuff, and pretty much ignore their core job.
So, I have two responses to that. Number one, you'll see the Danielson Framework, here, let me show you, so you can see a little bigger. So, Danielson Framework, maybe I can even show, right there, that is the, so that's the teacher evaluation program. So, those are not student outcomes, but that is the measure of students that demonstrate proficiency in the 22 components of the Danielson Framework would automatically earn units of growth commensurate with their performance.
As observed in the classroom?
As observed in the classroom by both mentors, instructional coaches, peer, our teacher cadre-trained teachers, and administrators. So, that component is present. The other piece that we're hoping to have in place to sort of avoid exactly what you're talking about, how do I focus on just earning more money? The peer review panel, it's been interesting. As we've talked about that concept, our initial concern was that we would put teachers and administrators on this peer review panel and that they, they would just approve whatever teachers were requesting. You know, a teacher comes in and says, well, I wanna read this book, and it'll make you a better teacher. What we're finding is we probably will have to do some training on the other end, because what we're starting to hear from teachers that are demonstrating interest in the peer review panel is that they're gonna nail people. And so, we really are having to back up a little bit and say, what's reasonable? You know, what would be the expectation for work in a college course class? And we don't typically insert a lot of oversight for that. They apply for the class, they turn in their transcript, and so, we don't really have a lot of oversight in, what did you learn, did you actually apply it? We will have some oversight now in, what did you actually learn and how did you apply it? But we're not gonna make it impossible for anyone to submit a proposal that actually gets approved either. So, there's gonna have to be some training, and even some fidelity with sort of the philosophical agreements between the peer review panel. What is considered rigorous enough? What is relevant enough? And what is strategic planning that's actually warranted, warrants, you know, getting a pay raise? So, that's kind of that next body of work, what does that actually look like?
So, how long would this evaluation committee, how long would the people be on this committee to evaluate these teachers?
Well, so, that's an interesting point. One of the things that we've talked about is, is it imperative for us to consider having broad representation across content areas? So, if a specialty, a Spanish teacher wants to come in and do a high-level, you know, advanced Spanish proposal, they wanna, I don't know, do some curriculum work, I don't know what that proposal might look like, but we've had conversations about, is it important then for there to be a Spanish counterpart as a member of the peer review panel? And potentially, that's getting some, that's getting some legs. But, how many people can you train in that broad? You know, if you really do want fidelity and sort of inter-rater reliability of those members of the panel, you can't have 50 people willing to serve that you just call willy-nilly either. So, like I said, that's sort of our next nugget of work is really honing in on, what does that peer review panel look like? What's the process for actually submitting a proposal? What's the process and timeline for getting a proposal approved? Those are the kinds of things that the committee really is digging into now.
I think I know your answer, but based on that same scenario where a Spanish teacher goes off and do some curriculum work, so he gets approved, and they go ahead and do this, and develop a great package, and they get a raise out of it, and the next year, they don't do anything, they work back.
So, at this point, the team has determined that, I think their response is that unless you're on a plan of assistance, you won't ever move backwards, but you also won't move forward. So, it's possible that you would just stick. If you are not earning units of growth, you don't move. So, if, say, your family circumstances, you have a young family, and this isn't the year that you can dedicate to additional projects or whatever, that's fine, you would earn your COLA, let's say, if one were negotiated, but you would stay at that same step. So, those, because again, it's not relative to years of experience. We also are attempting to build in though, let's say you're a good teacher, let's say you're a great teacher, and you are earning those units from the Danielson Framework, that you wouldn't end up sitting any longer than two years, that just the virtue of being a great teacher, you would earn enough just on the Danielson Framework without doing anything extra, that every other year, you would move down and earn that, earn that raise.
So, they don't necessarily have to do something in all those things?
Correct, absolutely.
It's kind of weighted up?
Yep.
So, they could be a great teacher in the classroom, and like you say, it might just take them an extra year to get...
Right. And the other piece is, we, one of the other things that we're designing is kind of this thought, learning lab classrooms. So, let's say you're a great teacher in the classroom, and you prioritize staying in the classroom. Perhaps you're willing to open your classroom up so other people can see how great you are in the classroom, and we compensate you for that. You know, you don't earn as many units of growth as someone who's investing in a huge action, action research project, but you are compensated with a unit of growth because you're offering your expertise in the classroom so that others can learn from you.
That's good. I'd like to see teachers really be encouraged to be a great teacher, not doing extra projects.
Right.
Well, then, I think, I know what one was, Wally, I was saying, 'cause that's my conception, okay, all this other stuff, great, but what is it really gonna translate to as a community and a great educator? If they're great at it, and we wanna be able to highlight those folks and almost act them as district mentors, to open the classroom doors up to, you know, share best practices, then that's great, so.
And I think the other piece that we really have attempted to highlight is, graduate classes right now, you're somewhat at the mercy of the university. So, if you're trying to get your master's, you have to take, you know, whatever, qualitative research and quantitative research, and things that may never make you a better teacher, but if we put you in control of the action research project, you may choose to say, I wanna know if embedding intensive reading fluency instruction over the course of this year does or does not influence my own student's growth? I mean, it could be, we're trying not to make it an extra project, we're trying to make it, what, if you were gonna spend 30 hours in a graduate level class, and you're not gonna spend 30 hours on your own class, what is work that benefits you? What is work that makes you a better teacher, that's applicable, that you have chosen? So, we're not giving you the action research project, you're saying, I wanna do this.
So, they could even do something within their, within their classroom?
Absolutely.
To see if it helps a student grow.
Yep.
Good. Just as a piece of reference, and as a little bit of a diversion, you touched on the master's hearing. What is the percentage of our teachers coming into the district that actually have a master's from day one?
It's probably more now than it perhaps used to be, because we have, we have a lot of teachers that came in with MATs, partially because that automatically met all the TSBC license renewals, and when we initially knew we were walking into teacher shortages, people with a bachelor's degree in anything could go back in just in one year and end up with a teaching license. So, we probably actually have more teachers with masters in the last five, maybe even, maybe even longer than that.
Maybe even sort of 2000 year, with the NCLB and highly qualified requirements, really a lot of teachers would receive their MAT, masters in arts of teaching, or some kind of graduate work. I can't tell you exactly what the number is, but Linda's right, there are more teachers today that have masters than I think we've ever experienced in this.
Right. Still kind of the common thought of, you know, come out, do that year, that full year intensive in the T, get it done.
Get it done.
You're gonna come in with a higher salary.
You come in at a higher salary, and you're done.
You're gonna have to do it anyway, so.
Exactly right.
Linda, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, so, so this is essentially a way to take the cost of, off the teachers?
Yes.
How much is that, how much is in that net? That's wonderful. What increased costs over time is, is our district gonna see?
So, that's a great question. So, we are in the process, we're working with a financial consultant who actually worked with the Bend district, they were very pleased with his work, and he's in the process of collecting, so, all of our pay scales over the past five years, all of the list of where our current teacher, you know, how many are at VA, how many are at VA plus 60, how many are at, so, doing that sort of analysis, and then, 'cause what we need to know is, we need to know the fiscal impact over the next 10 years.
Yes.
And so, some of that is already built into the system, sort of with their expertise, this concept of gates, you know, you have to stay at least four years, those gates keep people from basically breaking the bank. 'Cause essentially, what he needs to do is, he needs to do, what's a comparison of the average number of people who are increasing by earning college credits now compared to what we believe to be the average number of people who would pursue units of growth in the new system? And because we have a control of that at the beginning, we're only going to allow certain people to opt in, you know, so we say, okay, if you're a brand-new teacher hired, we opt you in, and maybe we only have 10 slots in addition. I mean, it may be a very small pilot. You know, we only let 10 other teachers in the district into this for three years until it's run, you know, those sorts of things. Districts have played with that all over the board, but this guy, so I have three pages of documents that he needs from me by the middle of May, and then, he'll run his financial numbers, and by the end of May, he'll come back and meet with us.
I guess, I guess the question I was getting at is, over time, if we're in charge of providing all this training?
Right.
What is that gonna cost us? 'Cause, 'cause right now, the, right now, the, the teachers are paying out of pocket
Right.
To colleges, now, we're gonna pay it, granted, at much lower cost.
Right.
But, you know, just essentially, what's that, you know?
Let me clarify just one thing with that comment, and it is part of our collective bargaining agreement, is, does have tuition reimbursement for teachers. So, depending on participation level any given year, teachers, I've seen it as high as 90 cents return per dollar return for investment, as low as 40 and 45 cents.
Oh, okay.
So, there is some compensation, a compensation reimbursement that we provide for teachers based upon participation. And so, I can see an article in the collective bargaining agreement like that going away, actually, simply because they're getting their, most of their professional development internally rather than at the university level.
So, we're saving ourselves money and the teachers, we're just saving money all around.
Right. And the other piece is, your currency becomes units of growth.
Right.
So, now, we build our local experts, you've done the action research, you've done the curriculum-based project on NGSS, the brand-new new science standards, and now, you've written a course. You think that you can offer teachers three, three-hour sessions, you know, once a month or whatever. So, teachers that come to that session, let's say, I'm just making up a number, let's say, they show up and they complete those nine hours, and they earn three units of growth. Well, you are the teacher of the course, you developed the course, so you get double.
There you go.
You know, so again, it's that, it's just changing the currency.
And they make progress without even ever having a master's.
Right.
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 Okay. So, what about... Or charging, or, or paying tuition?
Right, or paying tuition.
Or we have to pay tuition, you know, by reimbursing for that, okay.
So what about recognition or reciprocity from other districts? So, you know, you're talking about this program in Bend, so if a teacher comes from Bend, how are we going to recognize, or if they come from Salem, where they don't have this, how are we going to recognize, or vice versa, if they leave here and go there, how are, you know?
So again, that would be a determination, because this is not mandatory, they would potentially be offered a side-by-side comparison. I mean, that's what we would offer every teacher before we ask them to elect which system they opt into. You currently live at this in steps and lanes, so there would have to be some sort of preliminary placement. You're coming to us, you have a masters, you don't have a masters, whatever, and you have nine units of experience. That would place you at this dollar figure in steps and lanes. Commensurate to that dollar figure would land you lane two, step six, you know, or whatever. So, so you would land commensurate, kind of with that side-by-side comparison, and then if you were to elect to opt in, if you were eligible, depending on how many slots we have, you opt into the new creative compensation system, then you just automatically fall into units of growth.
So basically, coming into a district, then you'd follow into regular pay schedule, then?
You have to, you know, when someone first walks in the door, to at least...
You don't know what they're at?
Right. And you can't, you can't say, well, what did you make in your old district? And we'll try to, I mean, that's not commensurate either. So you have to at least, because steps and lanes isn't going away, that is negotiated contract, that at least has to be a reference.
Okay, that's nice. And can teachers opt in and out?
We haven't decided that.
Okay.
We've talked, we've talked a lot about it, and districts, again, have, they're about half and half.
You mean start in this one?
Choosing to go over, you know, if opt-in is an option for you, let's say you're eligible for opt-in, and you got one of the slots to opt in, and then two years later saying, this too much work, or, you know, or I'm going to get my masters anyways, who knows?
I see.
We haven't decided.
When are you hoping to implement something like this?
In the fall.
Really?
With, I would, I would say it would be a pilot, and, and until we get the numbers back from the financial guy, I mean, by, it could be five people. I literally have no concept of what we're talking about as far as jumping in the first year.
Is it all new hires would go to this?
In theory.
In theory?
Yeah, I mean, that's the easiest way, correct. Again, sort of all that minutia that, and really until the financial guy puts some hard numbers in front of us, we're guessing.
Yeah, and I think we're at a point too, and that's why you received another presentation, because Linda presented earlier this year, and the whole collaboration grant for creative compensation, they didn't have a lot, work completed at that point, but they do now. But I think what's going to be important is for you to receive an update from Linda, again, in the creative compensation committee, as we get into the new year, to see how many we have, if it's five, how, because this is almost in itself an action research project, I suppose, because we're, we're trying to gather information to say, is this something that not only meets the needs, as Linda described at the beginning, especially with our millennial teachers, which is going to continue to increase over time, and will this be a motivation enough? And, you bring up some very good points about finance, is this something that's affordable and motivating for our school district? And I think at that point, you as a board are going to have to give some feedback as well about its continuation too, or even some responses to possible changes that Linda and the community can consider for this. So I think moving ahead at this point, collecting information is the next natural step, and then getting in more information once or twice next year in front of you is really the best place to go.
Sounds good.
We'll see, looking posted.
Yeah, I like it, it sounds like it might be, could something get to change to...
Go ahead, ignore this, this is, I'm getting you ready for your next.
Two agenda items, yeah. Thanks, Linda.
Okay, thank you, Linda. Okay, moving on, sale of Eugene Field.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, Mr. Jerr, I can run with that. I have asked that this be placed on the agenda to let you know that we have, currently have an RFP that was published about a week ago, specific to acquiring an agent, broker, an agent to sell Eugene Field and property. I have a copy of the RFP here, and you're welcome to read through it on the website as well, it's posted there. We have a pre-proposal meeting last Friday at Eugene Field School, just to take a look at the place, and we are scheduled to receive proposals by 3:00 on May 2nd. And then the following week, we'll go through a screening and selection process, and then have an agent for your consideration at the May 9th board meeting. Once we get that person on board, I think you'll be in a good position to see what's happening, and see what, how we can best sell that, the school in second. So, just wanted to give you a quick update on that, and ask you if you have any questions with me.
Questions? Okay, Oregon Rising Campaign.
Linda? I shared the Oregon Rising campaign information with you, really, I think a couple of meetings now, and it's a, it's a collaborative effort between Confederation of Oregon School Administrators, Oregon Education Association, Oregon School Boards Association, really to shed not only a positive light on really the efforts of schools across the state of Oregon, but really reach out to the millions of people across the state to say, we want your feedback, we want to hear from you. It's very similar maybe to the vision process that you went through as a school district a couple of years ago, but this is more on a statewide level. So there's a short video, it's about three minutes, and then I've given each of you the Oregon Rising website, which is Oregon-Rising.org. I was hoping to have Chromebooks ready for you here this evening, that didn't work out simply because it requires a Gmail address for all of you, and I have to go through that next step to do it. So I do ask each of you, you're welcome to do it here on my laptop, or Linda's, or when you go home, just to go to the Oregon Rising website, and there's a very short survey that after you watch the video, that you answer a few questions, you give some input, and that's it. And so we're sending this same information out to all of the parent-teacher clubs in the district, we're asking them to be shown at each one of the PTC meetings here with you as a board, and other groups in the community, asking them to share this information. Very easy, very understandable, and I think you'll see if you watch the video that it has some good information, so.
Move that light.
This is an invitation to dream about the kinds of schools we want for Oregon students, to dream about how we can help our kids become the thinkers, leaders, and citizens we need. Oregon Rising is about collecting voices, hopes...
Dreams and ideas.
From people around the state.
The more voices, the better.
We are asking you to take some time... To dream and to share your vision. Of the schools you want for us. Today and into the future. Oregon Rising is a project sponsored by three organizations that represent the state's educators, administrators, and school boards, essentially the people that are tasked with educating Oregon students. It's not affiliated with a ballot measure, a political party, or a political action committee. Say you have kids or grandkids, or maybe it's the kids next door. Imagine what schools could be if there were no of these. What would education look like? For every Oregon child. For every Oregon child. Rich or poor. Rural or urban. Regardless of color or background, what would that education include? How can we fulfill the promise our kids show? How would the next generation of Oregonians? Be prepared to succeed in their lives and careers. And contribute to our communities. How will we achieve our dreams? How will we achieve our dreams? What would that mean for all of Oregon? For our communities. Great schools? A great state. Tell us. Tell us. Tell us. Tell us. Tell us. Let's make it happen. Let's make it happen. Tell us. Let's make it happen. Oregon Rising. Oregon Rising. Oregon Rising.
So that's the extent of the video, and truthfully, I've taken a survey myself, it took me about 10 minutes. I think it's something that each of you can do on your own time, and I do encourage you to do that, I encourage the members of the audience to do it as well, to take some time to do this. The target is 10,000 people across Oregon taking this, taking this survey, and I believe, I believe there's pretty much shot at getting it. And if you think in terms of 10,000 people coming from across distribution of the state of Oregon geographically, and even from rural to more municipal areas, I think you can imagine that that's going to be a pretty powerful statement about where people would like to see Oregon schools in the, in the near and in the distant future. So encourage your participation, and ask you to take a look at the website. And you're welcome to stay after tonight if you want to use any of the devices here, you can surely take some time tonight too, if you like.
Okay. Any questions on that?
Thank you. Spread the word.
Okay. Community Root School placement on the Schleter campus.
Yeah, this is the agenda item that was a result of the revised, caused the revised agenda today, and want to let you know that we have a couple of representatives from Community Root School in the audience this evening, Dan Kaplan, the board chair for Community Root School, and Miranda Traeger, the Community Root School administrator. And this is, this is news, and I've had a couple of conversations with Miranda today. Let me, let me just set the background a little bit, going back just really a couple of weeks, because this is very new information. All of you aware, because we've had some conversation about the closure, or not the closure, about the discontinuation of the Silverton Christian School, and what that means for the area and a number of students. And, you know, I think you can probably anticipate where I'm going with this, but the reality is, is that the church that owns the school building of the Christian School and Community Root Charter School have had some conversation about the potential placement of the Charter School on that site. And it appears that that's going to happen. I can't tell you that the final decision has been made, but what I can tell you, based on my conversation with Miranda, is that there have been, there has been consensus developed within the church, and that is resulting in the Community Roots Board meeting tomorrow night, in a special meeting to discuss negotiations for a lease agreement with church. And that clearly causes some questions, and what I want to tell you first off, first off, is that, and that's part of the reason why both Dan and Miranda are here, is that they have it as one of their distinct priorities to maintain and continue to maintain the positive relationship that we have with Silverfall School issue. But obviously, over the course of the last approximately two years or so, we've been planning, we of the district have been planning with the intent of having Community Roots as, to be located on a new site on the Schleter campus. And so I do have the illustration here this evening, just in case you've forgotten, but it's this area right here, there's the current concession standard, obviously the football taken, and then three modulators are part of the plan to be added, which are five classrooms for Community Root School and office area, in addition to access to the campus as well. And so at this point, we, we have, we have a matter to deal with. And I can tell you from...
I would say it's actually an opportunity.
Yeah, exactly. And I can tell you from my perspective, this site compared to a fully functioning, established school that will meet their needs, I get it. I think what's probably most pressing here is for you as a school board, for us as a school district, to tandem with Community Root School, to be certain that any of the entities of a change like this are best addressed. We've clearly done some investment in that site already to begin with. Now admittedly, we're not another month or two months into it, you know, we'd be fully invested in that, but some improvements haven't made, but some improvements are still able to be stopped, we're able to renegotiate some contracts specific to, let's say, the modular location and things. So we can put some things in hold, and Joel and Lauren and I are working on that literally as we speak, so we don't know quite what the entire outcome of that will be. There, there has been an investment, and that investment, we, you know, we can't get back. I think you'll, you'll see and hear, and especially, I have a question from Miranda and Dan, a willingness on the part of Community Root School to, again, make this work in the best interest of the district, while at the same time, supporting their desire to establish themselves in a very functional facility. So I'm sharing that with you for conversation, and I think that you, you guys are willing to answer any questions if you have, if the board has any.
I have rumblings of this this afternoon, and thought about it for a little bit, and I think, I think actually it's a good thing for everybody, it's good for the church, it's good for Community Roots, and it's good for the district. We can reduce our project cost here, if we can, if we act quickly, and it helps the church out, and it gives Community Roots a really nice location for a school.
Relative to the new building, it could be... Yeah, I think, I think in the long run, it's good for everybody, I think it's going to be better for you guys, you know, and if we ever, you know, should we ever pass a bond to do more out on this side, then we'll have to, you know, figure out what's going to happen with you guys again, and things like that, not that that would, could even be an issue, but, I mean, down the line. But we do have the, how much have we done out there, and about what have we...
Well, it's a little hard to identify.
I saw there was gravel.
Yeah, there's been some excavation, there's been some digging of trenches for roof drain lines, you know, and I think by the time you capture the engineering and the architecture work and all of that, we're probably looking around $50,000 specific to that. That's our guess, it could be higher than that, that's our guess in that range somewhere. And again, that's a bit of a fleeting figure, because, you know, there are many tasks we did to, to planning of the building that applied to this area as well, simply because of the task itself.
And do you know our opportunity for savings?
If we can renegotiate, let's say, the modular contract, and have two of those go to other buyers, that could be $150,000 savings there alone. So there's some opportunity here for the district to be able to capitalize on some things. And again, that's a matter of putting ourselves in a good position. You know, we negotiate contracts with the intent that if unique circumstances arise that, but some of those, sometimes they're just a little bit more unpredictable than maybe this. This one was hard to predict, I mean, who knew even two weeks ago that this opportunity was even going to arise? And so I think when we, when you have unique circumstances like this, you put your best mind, your best thought into it, your best attention into it, you do what you can that's in the best interest ultimately of students across the district, and having the students from Community Roots establish themselves at the church makes tons of sense to me as well. It's just a matter of how do we get through this to be certain that it's in the best interest of the public to renegotiate a few contracts and to be able to settle on the other side in a good place.
You know, in the, for the modular buildings, if we can't, if we can't renegotiate these contracts, we could, we could purchase the things and just resell them.
We could.
If it came down to that.
Question, is, do you perceive a need for that space, either shortly in the future or a few, one, two, three years down the road, that maybe we would proceed with building this, or tweaking it a bit to meet needs, but also has some forward thought here that if we don't have a bond passed in the next three to five years, maybe we're in need of that space?
That's, that's a fair question to ask, it's one that we actually, we had a discussion about today, do we install five classrooms, go ahead, you know, fully obligate ourselves to the project? Again, you have five empty classrooms out there, and I think from a use standpoint, I can't cite this specifically, but I know from an occupancy standpoint, we have to be very careful about, that it's being used for the purpose that it was intended. So if we have no students to put in there to serve as that specific occupancy, and let's say a year lapses, I can't remember what the ordinance is with the city or the county, a year lapses, and we still aren't using that, then we may lose occupancy. So there are some variations that we have to be careful. The other piece is that, you know, we design, we design, or we use modular structures for a not-so-permanent solution, you know, temporary solution as much as possible, if we were to put those in with some intent of occupying them at some point in the future, would that still mean that sort of expectation that you had for using modular?
And there's no tight quarters now, based on how we're going to configure the classrooms and space, we're all accounted for, we've got enough room, nothing can...
Yeah, depending upon the master scheduling, you have up to two extra rooms in the middle school available for use next year, at between 430 and 450 students, which is what we expect.
The finance guys I've always worked with, always talk about the cost of money, it's always better to have in your pocket than spending on something and not use it. And if we put those in, and we'd have to maintain them, and then they'd start degrading, and...
And they're secluded, sequestered away from the rest of the...
Yeah, I think if we can renegotiate that, you know, maybe not, maybe not even purchase some of those modulars if we can, if we can get out of it.
Let's, let's not lose money.
Yeah. But it's, you know, and Aaron brings up a good point to think down the line, but, you know, my first thought when you said that was, the gravel's already out there, and you can't, you're not going to take that out and plant grass again. So that's still there, I mean, that could be an opportunity down the line, if we ever got some kind of a CTE program going for the junior high, there's some space out there that could be very functional for something like that.
Yeah, that's a good point as well, Tim, let me give you an example, because...
We hate a bunch of parking space.
There will be a, there'll be an electrical vault in this area, I can't say exactly where it is, but the electrical vault is designed to serve these modulars and those modulars, and so that electrical vault is, will still be in place, and, and it just won't be tapped into, to be used here, so we'll still have, for example, some electrical capacity, some drainage capacity, low voltage capacity, all of that is not going away, it'll still be there, the lines won't be buried, because we are going to need them, but the capacity to do so will be there for the future if we need it.
You might even want to, I mean, I noticed just the L part is, excuse me, just the L is gravel, you might even want to gravel the rest of it in there for, like Tom said, for parking and stuff.
That's not a bad idea.
Yeah, we just, with, with all the modulars, we took away a bunch of parking, you know, I don't know, just, just...
You know, extra parking might be nice for come football season and things like that.
Yeah, extra parking would be nice, and actually, there was no net loss in parking at Tom, because of that, the old footprint.
Oh, that's right. Correct.
Correct.
But it's, it's tight, yeah, anyway, you know...
But, but you're right, we could always use more parking here for large ones.
I think it's, I think it's great that Community Roots might find their own building, that's their own, and not, I think it might, so...
So if I recall, part of our, the money that we're gonna use to pay back this loan on this was, was it some of that part of a lease agreement?
That, that's part of the plan that...
So how's that, you're talking about breaking the lease, you know, that sort of thing? Where are we at with that?
So I would suggest that any revenue that we, that we are able to collect from this, that we, that we keep for, just for that purpose, Todd, if we sell two of the modulators back for $150,000, that that money be used to help make the, the next payment on, on the loan for repurposing the Schleter Campus. You know, we did estimate over 13 years that about $250,000 would come from a lease agreement with Community Roots or any other charter school on, on campus. So you're right, that's a lost revenue stream, and, and as a school district, you'll have to, over time, be able to compensate and adjust for that.
So, to ask the ugly question, are we gonna have, is there gonna be any kind of recourse? You know, if, for breaking a lease agreement, like you wouldn't with any other lease, or...
The, the only lease agreement that we have with Community Roots School is through June 30th of this year.
Oh, so they don't have, been renewing it?
We, we hadn't begun the negotiation for another lease, simply because this was the only option for them. So obviously, if a new site, in this case, since a new site came open, I think it, it causes rethinking of, of that. So there, no, there was no legal lease agreement beyond June 30th of this year in place. And, and, and from my perspective, I, I think it, it, while I, while I understand the potential for that, I, I sure we don't want to get, and have no interest in being litigious with a partner.
No, no, I just, I, I thought that if it'd been redone, if there was, you know, if the lease had been renewed, was there some clause or something like that? That's, that's what I was asking.
Sure, sure. No, it expired a long time ago.
Okay.
So we'll keep you posted on this.
Yeah.
Lauren and, and Joel for another couple weeks, and I have some, some work to do. And we think we're gonna be able to come out on the other side of this and make it right for everyone.
Pretty great facility for them. I, I live basically right behind the church and, and Community Roots School, and I heard that, you know, the, the school was closing. It's always kind of fun to hear the kids, and I have a home office, I hear the kids playing in the background, you know, in the back and everything, so I was like, kind of bothered, like, "Oh, we're not gonna have that next year, and now to have that, it's gonna be kind of cool." Again, what I, I mean, it's a great facility, it's, it's, I mean, it's a year old, I mean, it is outstanding. So, I'm glad that, that we're gonna find somebody for, for that spot, so, good spot.
Okay, other comments or questions on that?
Oh, I'm just kind of disappointed to lose them as a partner in education, probably more than anything.
On campus.
On campus, they've done such a good, you know, effort with the Silverfall School District, and I think they brought a lot to the choices that they gave to different kids, and so...
But we're fortunate that, that the charter will continue.
Yes.
And we'll still have, we have three, second year agreement, I think, so we still have three, four more years on the charter agreement, so that's great.
Yeah.
And I agree, and this actually too, as an added bonus, will allow them to realize the, the capacity that you approved with up to 135 students for their charter school, because I believe that campus will hold 135 kids, where we couldn't hold them here that many.
Okay. 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 Moving on, other items wasn't on our agenda, but we usually do other stuff, and Andy, you had something real quick?
Well, I was just gonna throw something out there for your, for a conversation for you as a, as a board, and again, I want to be very careful and very sensitive to, to this topic, and I, I'm gonna start by saying that, that I think it's important that you as board members continue, and, and I think you do generally a pretty good job of this, but to remind yourself of your roles and responsibilities as, as board members, especially as individual board members and directors related to this school district. And you've gone through some pretty extensive training with Oregon School Boards Association last summer, you, you receive some information from me on occasion, I know some of you even visit their website to receive some training on occasion, just about the individual role. But, but I, I just wanna mention something, and this is, this is with, with all due respect to, to Todd, to Mr. White as the, as a director, but I, I feel obligated to share this with you, simply because I, I, it caught my attention, a quote that was listed in, in our newspaper about a week ago, specific to the issuing of the SEDEXO contract, and I, and I just wanna read it to you specifically, and, and it said, this is from, from Mr. White, he says, he said, he voted against renewing SEDEXO contract because he believes a responsibility belongs with Belando and Stevens. He said, "If it's in the red, they are the ones who should be faulted." And, and the only reason I bring that to your attention as a board, for you just to have a discussion, is simply because when you think about the policies that you have specific to this district, and when you think about the board and superintendent working relationship, excuse me, working agreement, that you have spent multiple years at securing, this one hints at, I think, putting some of that in question, including some of your policies, especially if there is a statement being made that can be inferred, or, or otherwise is intended to be a, a statement that's a performance measure of superintendent and assistant superintendent. And I want, just wanna briefly talk about those separately. You as a board are gonna begin my evaluation this evening, and as you know, my full evaluation is actually initially discussed in the executive session, and then the document itself is released to the public. And I'm the only employee in the school district that has, has that, that privilege, that luxury, I suppose. But, but the assistant superintendent is not. The assistant superintendent is an employee of this district, and when, when a comment is made that is potentially interpreted as a performance measure of an employee of the district, again, keeping in mind that one of my responsibilities is to help guide you and to keep you informed or posted of, of information to minimize your risk and to minimize your liability, when a statement like that is issued, that has the potential to increase your risk as a school district, and specifically as a school board, if a person's evaluation or performance indicators are made in a public light. Now, there's, could be lots of debate and dialogue about intent, what was really meant with that, but my, my, the purpose of this conversation is to remind you as a board the importance of you, especially when you speak within public, when you speak with the media, when you speak with others, the importance of you not giving any indication that, that you are violating anything that would otherwise be considered confidential, or placing the district in a potential risk. So I share that with you, you've got multiple policies that help address this, you have multiple parts of your board superintendent working agreement that, that address this. And again, with all due respect to you, Mr. White, I just feel it's important that I take a few minutes this evening and share that with you, lay it on the table in front of you for you to ask questions of me, or for you to have conversations amongst yourself.
I would say, you know, my intent with that was that, you know, responsibility is always, you know, high, you're always responsible for the people underneath you. And when it was mentioned out that, that a couple of the reasons were that there was a lack of manpower, and the hours had to be added, and that sort of thing, that I thought that should have been addressed by administration, you know, before it got to SEDEXO. So that, that was, you know, that's what it was, that, that's why there was the responsibility with, with administration, so. It wasn't meant as a slight to anybody, but just, you know, that's where I thought it was at.
Well, Todd, I think the naming, and that really, when I saw that, it really, basically, it pretty much ticked me off, because the naming of names is, as far as I'm concerned, that's not okay. To throw some of our, you know, our superintendent, our assistant superintendent up kind of under the bus like that, I don't think it's okay, and it, and it does open the district up to what, you know, to legal issues too. I mean, they could, you know, an employee could sue for slander and things like that. So, and that's, I'm, you know, that will, I don't think that'll happen in this case, but it's a possibility. And, and so I think we just have to be very careful in, in our conversations, and, you know, with the press and with, with other people out there. So, I just thought it was out of place personally, to name names. Anything else? Okay. Okay, we're gonna take, we'll take a five-minute break, and then we'll move into executive session and ORS 192660. Exempt Public Records will begin our superintendent evaluation for senior workers.